Five o'clock on Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and we'll open the city council meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone. Would you please stand and say a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call that it.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Jessica.
Here.
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 Entertained motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the agenda? We'll call that it.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Across the mayor's desk, I'd like to thank our videographer CJ R. Last time I introduced him as AJ, so this, I went CJ, so thanks again. And then last call before fall and Band Day will be mentioned a little bit later in the agenda. So today I just wanted to mention a few more words about our trip to Algonquin, Washington. The September update from the mayor that I did has a lot more information on it, but today I just want to show you a few photos and then explain why everyone up here has a bag of potato chips. So, as you see on the screen, Jewel and I were invited to Algonquin, Washington by Mayor Troy Lenell, and this is a picture of he and I outside of the Algonquin, Washington City Hall building. That building was built in two thousand seventeen, where our city hall was built in two thousand eighteen. So he said, "Come on out and join us in Algonquin Day Celebration," which is Saturday, was Saturday, August twenty-third. Algonquin Day is what they celebrate every year, and it's much like our Founder's Day. Theirs is in August, ours, of course, is in July, and the parade starts at ten thirty. So I thought I might as well be in the parade. I mean Troy said I could do that. So Jewel and I drove out. I used my magnet that says Rick Murphy, Mayor of Algonquin, and then I thought, "I better add a little something to that to designate that it's not Algonquin, Washington, and I'm running against Mayor Troy or something." So we just added a slip of paper that said Iowa, so. And then here's just a photo with Mayor Troy and I and the Algonquin Police Department in Algonquin, Washington, and they refer to themselves as the AT. So. Very hospitable. We had a great time, made a lot of good connections. Very, very friendly community, and I did invite Mayor Troy and his wife Susan to Algonquin, Iowa next year for Founder's Day, as I mentioned before. So with the potato chips, when we got there, they do have a potato chip company there and in Algonquin, Washington, but they had just recently sold it to a company in Pennsylvania. So I went to the potato chip company, talked to the manager there, told him who I was. I was Mayor of Algonquin, Iowa, and he thought that was pretty cool. We had a nice visit. He said, "Oh, I've got some things to send back with you." So he sent a case of potato chips, and on the back, if everyone would like to look on the back, in the lower left-hand corner, it's distributed by Kennedy Enterprises, Algonquin, Washington. So this is something that's unique because the newer ones now say that it's packaged in, I believe it's handled over Pennsylvania. So there's a keepsake for everybody. What is the population of Algonquin, Oregon? Population about thirty-five hundred, and we're fifty-five hundred. About thirty miles south of Seattle and thirty miles north of Dakota. Good night. Hope that the mayor and his wife Susan come out to celebrate with us next year or so.
Any of those police officers would like to live in Algonquin, Iowa, you think?
I checked with Bo, and he said we're pretty well stacked right now. Plus, I want to be on a good relationship, yep, with Mayor Troy. Any council members have anything they would like to share? Okay, hearing that, we'll move to update from state legislature.
First, I'd like to invite our Chief of Police, Faraq, to share an introduction.
Yeah, I think the last two city council meetings, we've introduced a new hire. I am again today. Today, this is not for a police officer position. This is Clarence Carlson. He just started today. He is in training now for dispatcher. So we're excited to have him on board, so he was, he's actually sitting, sitting over the dispatcher. I go, "Come on over, give him a quick break, and I'll have him introduce himself here to you guys."
My name is Clarence Carlson. Born and raised on a farm over the Sexton pile. Graduated Algonquin in ninety-seven. We were in the cities for a few years and in Kansas City for a few years, but we're back in the area and happy to be a part of the team. Excited.
Great, welcome.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
And then a few just reminders on some rec programs coming up with on Saturday, October fourth, will be our annual Tomato Alley Run. That starts at eight AM, the one mile and the five K and the ten K, eight thirty AM. So it's the same day as Band Day. If registration's open now, you can register that day. And then the Fall Youth Volleyball that will be starting this November, and so we're taking sign-ups for that. Flag football is underway. I believe we're in our second week already. And we're actively getting on the rec side of things.
Any else? Thank you. Agenda item number seven, this is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any item that's not on the agenda. Seeing no one that would like to speak, we'll move to agenda item number eight, which is the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from our September second work session and our regular city council meeting, approve the bills to be paid this cycle, and approve the department reports, as well as approving the minutes from the various boards and commissions that have met. Second. Motion from Rodney, second from Brad. Any discussion? We'll call that it.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Turn to new business agenda, item number nine. This is the third reading of an ordinance that will allow parking lots by special exception.
This ordinance applies to the downtown, that's the central general business district, which will allow private parking lots by special exception. That would be approved by an adjustment.
Motion to waive the third reading.
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Kathy to waive the third reading. Any discussion? We'll call that it.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve third reading.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the third reading. Any discussion? We'll call that it.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion? We'll call that it.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number ten is the third reading of an ordinance concerning signs and awnings.
These next two ordinances kind of work together. They cleaned up the language between our zoning code and our sign code. We had some ambiguous terms between the two. It was confusing as to where you had to look for what sign you were going to be installing. So now, basically, all of our sign regulations, rather than chapter fifteen point two four, are signing awnings, except for just a couple smaller regulations, like temporary signs, for instance, grandchild signs, real estate for sale signs, et cetera, are still covered under the zoning code.
Motion to waive the third reading.
Second.
Motion from Brad, second from Rodney to waive the third reading. Any discussion? We'll call that it.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve the third reading. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the third reading. Any discussion? We'll call that it.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yep.
Don. Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Motion carried. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion? We'll call that it.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number eleven is an ordinance, it's the second, third readings of an ordinance concerning zoning regulations regarding signs.
It's pretty much the same thing. It's the second and third reading because we've delayed one council meeting to get the portable sign regulations in. And since these two actually go hand in hand, we need to pass them at the same time. Otherwise, we'll have to complete the ordinance for two weeks till we can get the other one passed.
Motion to waive the second reading.
Second. Motion and a second to waive the second reading. Any discussion? We'll call that it.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve second reading.
Second. Motion and a second to approve this, the second reading. Any discussion? We'll please get it.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to waive the third reading.
Second.
Motion from Brad, second from Jessica to waive the third reading. Any discussion? We'll call that it.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve the third reading.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the third reading. Any discussion? We'll call that it.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion? We'll please get it.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number twelve is release of mortgage through the housing revolving non-plant.
For Tammy and Brian, Hanson had a housing RLO loan with the city that has been paid off. So this resolution acknowledges that and then authorizes the release of the mortgage used to secure it.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any discussion? We'll call that it.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Don. Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Hanson, for your repaying. Agenda item number thirteen are requests for street closures.
We've got a few different community events with the event of Cruz in last call before fall and Band Day coming up, so I think we have representatives for those three events is to discuss what, share what's going to be going on in downtown and approve the street closures.
Got to like a look.
Okay, so basically I'm requesting the street closure, same as last year, from the west side of Harland Street to the west side of Thorington Street. I know we've got some construction going on in Thorington Street this year, but. So I must tell them, Bo, we may, we may move to the, you know, into the courthouse area if I have to on State Street. I will stay on State Street there. And then, so the date's September twenty-first. And requesting, what did we talk, Bo, nine o'clock?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, ten o'clock, street closure. And then also, we've always been allowed to have beer on the streets as long as the streets are closed. And then probably the restrooms open like seven, eight o'clock if we can. I know they do that electronic, you know, I think.
Yeah, the campus is open.
Okay.
So ten, ten AM, we close the street until when?
Till, we're there till four thirty is when we're, we're pretty much done by four thirty by then. And we take the, I told Bo, he only has one officer on that day, so if he needs help putting the barricades on, I've got, we've got volunteers, and we'll take them down. We took them down last year, too, so.
Is it great to bet on the others again at all?
Yeah, I got some good support from, I mean, Axe House is really hyped up about it. He likes the show, so. So I went up this year, I gotta talk to Premier Pizza because I don't know if Jewel's gonna be open or not, but I went up and did, Derek Lee's gonna be open, Pepsi's gonna be open, Axe House, and possibly Premier, so I went around to all of them, bought a hundred bucks worth of gift cards, ten-dollar gift cards to give away as door prizes to kind of entice some people into the businesses, so.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty much all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Just gonna. So Amy, would you like to come up and share with us a lot about last call before fall?
Okay, so last call before fall, we're in our fourth year of this event, and it is this year on Saturday, September twenty-seventh, from four to seven PM. We are asking to close State Street from Harland to Thorington, with the additional request to close South Moore Street. That's where we line up the horse and wagon to do rides, and North Dodd Street. That's where we're planning on putting some of the larger inflatables. So we request that the street will be closed around two o'clock, giving the vendors time to set up before the event starts at four, and it'll take us about probably an hour to get all the vendors cleaned up, so we'll, we can reopen the streets at eight o'clock that evening.
So that's a four to seven event?
Yep. Yep. We currently have about thirty vendors participating, with some hopes to get up to around forty vendors to about what we had last year, so. We'll fill most of those streets with those vendors, with the rides, got fire, fire trucks coming to do rides as well as the horse and wagon rides. So there's a very good variety of events and participants coming, so we're excited. Just now we just got to pray for good weather.
Great, alright. Thank you, and then I want to share with Band Day as well.
Yes, so as always, one of the most exciting events of the year. We're in our seventy-seventh year of the Band Day. So we've got the parade happening at one o'clock that day. Same route as previous years. They'll start there on Colby Street and go all the way down to Thorington. With the construction this year, the bands will continue to go north on Thorington and go to Bryant. That's where the buses pick them back up. But we are going to ask all people on floats to please continue going to Hall Street and go south to McGregor. So instead of, obviously, they can't turn on Thorington, and we don't want them going north on Thorington and running into the bands. So we're just gonna have all the floats hopefully go to Hall Street and go back to McGregor in order to avoid that conflict. But we've got the North Dodd Street, the intersection of North Dodd and State Street, we'll need that closed as early as seven o'clock in the morning, because that's the time that the stage mobile usually gets set up. For the bands, they will be in the Divine Mercy Catholic Church parking lot, as we did last year. As long as they don't have a funeral, our backup plan would be going back to Central Park, but it would be done in past years. Colby Street and Rooster Street, those are where the floats line up, so if we could get those closed as early as eleven. Those floats like to be getting lined up about that time, saving, but they always come earlier. And then a request from our volunteers who help coordinate is a four-way stop sign temporary, obviously, on the intersection of Colby and McGregor, as well as Call and McPherson, where the bands cross over from the church to get to State Street. So we just have two temporary stop signs on those. I'll let the city and the police decide what time they want the streets closed for all the spectators to start lining up. That'll be at their discretion, and then obviously the streets will open up as soon as the parade and the awards are over.
You said Colby and McGregor, and where else for the firm and stuff?
McPherson and Call.
Okay, thank you.
That's great for Band Day, so we got, parade entries are still coming in, but they're coming in strong, so it looks to be another great Band Day, and again, just hope for good weather, as always.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Motion to approve the street closures.
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Jessica to approve these three street closures. Any discussion? We'll call that it.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica. Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy. Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number fourteen is updates from the Algonquin Public Library.
Hi, everybody.
Oh, really?
Here to talk about good things tonight. First of all, you may have heard that we have had two retirements over the last few months. Pam Burnett and Judy Schultz have both retired. They were both long-term employees, and they will be greatly missed. We have made two new hires, Kate Nguyen started several weeks ago, and Michelle Espy, who's gonna come up and tell you a little bit about herself. This is day number two. And she didn't prep me that I was coming. I'm Michelle Espy. I live in rural Fulton, which actually makes me a Seneca resident, to be honest with you. And that's where I was born and raised, moved away for twenty-five years, and have been back to and care family. I am a certified social science teacher for high schools, and I've done that the first part of my life. And I'm also a certified library director. I was library director at Fulton for several years. And now I'd like to spread my wings and see what I'll go and do, what I can do for Algonquin. Algonquin can do for me. And yeah, we're in town all the time, so I keep it going, so. Thank you, honey.
Welcome.
So we're thrilled to have both of those people with us now. And in addition, I brought Sonia Harsha. She is our Angelical librarian and also does adult programming and planning. And she and Christie spent a lot of time this spring and this summer planning summer reading activities. And so we wanted to share some of that with you, and she's the person who has all the information with her.
Matt, we just want to give you a quick glimpse into what summer is like at the Algonquin Public Library. So we're focusing just on what our summer reading program was, so it went from seven weeks from the month of June into the middle of July. And we kicked off the program with a come and go game night. The Delta team brought the games. We just supplied the people, and we had two hundred fifty-nine attendees come to the library that night just to hang out and play games. And it was a great way to start things off. It's the first time we've done a come and go for kickoff, but it was perfect because it allowed parents to be at the ball games and then come over and play games for a while, and then, you know, come and go and leave when they needed to. And so two hundred fifty-nine people showed up to play games that night and pick up reading logs and get ready to be a participant in our summer reading program. Now, two hundred fifty-nine attendees at that party was just minimal for the total attendance and participation in our program because we had six hundred fifty people registered to participate in our summer program this year. So that's huge. I mean, that's like a hundred more than the past. As we continue through the summer, you know, story times are always a normal part of our, what we do at the library. Well, in the summertime, we have several guest readers that came. We had the Fair of Clean. We had the Donut Shop came. And we averaged from fifteen to eighty-eight attendees, or we, no, we had fifteen to eighty-eight attendees with an average of fifty-five, except for our goat story time, which was two hundred and fifty people showed up to meet the two baby goats that came to the library. So lots of people coming to programs. We continued with other story times. We were at this pool for summer splash story time. We did that once a week for seven weeks, and we had twenty to thirty people who got out of the pool, came over and listened to stories during the break, the light earth break. We also had lots of activities, our morning movies, thirty to seventy-five people attending each week. We did that for three weeks in the month of June. We don't do July because we don't want to compete with merchant movies at the theater. We also had Marvel painting. It was great use of our Messy Maker space, which is still in development. We're gonna be able to offer additional programming with cooking and sewing. We have sewing going on in there already, and obviously painting. And our game day snacks was also in Messy Maker space, and we had eighteen teen attendees for that, which is a really good turnout for teenagers, and they came and did some cooking with me. Purler Bees was an event for all ages, and we had forty-eight people attend that program. And if you've ever worked with purler bees, it is an amazing small, older skilled developer because they have to be able to use little tweezers. We also had some guest presenters throughout the summer. Ethan DeGroot came. He was, he's a local student here. He graduated a few years ago, and he does speed cubing. So he was teaching kids how to do the Rubik's Cube very fast. And we also invited a young man who has a website of his own called Nirvana Online. He does Minecraft, and he teaches coding through the use of Minecraft. And he did fifteen hours of programming for us. He did three days at the library. He had three days of workshops for kids in the afternoon where he had, they had two hours where they could learn about coding and then play on his website. And then in the evening, we had for teens and adults, and we had twenty, we had sixty-nine kids in the afternoon, twenty of the teens and adults come in the evenings, so they had like nine hours worth of Minecraft for adults in the evenings. And a potential school collaboration sometime this year for him. We also had some authors. Karen Land came and talked about racing the Iditarod. It was fun for a lot of people to see that young person dress up in all the layers and layers and layers of clothes that they need to stay warm, and we had eighty attendees for that program. Ben Wolfe is an author. He came. He, we collaborated with the Algonquin Community School Foundation for, to bring him. And participants got a blank journal. They got an eraser. They got a pencil. And he walked them through the steps of writing and talked about careers in writing and in publishing. And he did a morning workshop for kids. He did an afternoon workshop for teens and adults. And in total, we had a hundred and sixteen attendees in those programs. We also collaborated with summer school. The summer school was part of the attendees for the author presentation. The summer school came once a week to the library, and they would check out books. They were participating in some of the activities we had. And they had sixty-five students, and they were given a shortened version of our reading log, and all sixty-five completed the reading log. So we were very proud of them for that. And then we also had an ISU extension collaboration, and they did a program for adults called Downset Esthetizing for Seeing the Living. And we quite often are able to do collaborations with them for programming, so we appreciate their participation. We had twenty-eight attendees that evening. We have game-themed events. Our theme was Level Up the Algonquin Public Library, and so that's kind of a game theme. It's also just an improve yourself type theme, but we had a great time at that game show party, and it was fun for all ages. And then we had a game day where kids and families and daycare providers just came and hung out. We were doing some old-fashioned games as well as new games. We had Marvels there. We had, you know, some Twister. You know, kids love Twister. You never go out of that, right? And then we had a, in July, we, we switched a little bit to more in-house, just come and go type programming. And our interns created an escape room for us. They ran it. They created it. They developed it. They wrote all the clues. They did all the decorating and ran that for two weeks. And we had ninety-nine people who escaped the escape room, and lots of positive feedback. People are waiting for us to do another one. And then our third week in July, we did a clue week, where if you've ever played the game Clue, obviously, there's a murderer, and they had to figure out who did it and where. Well, it was Teke Tamba. She ran over the body by the copy of the book card. So, so people had fun with that. And of course, we, we look back and we evaluate what we did, and we say, "Well, what do, what should we continue to do? And what should we start doing, and what should we stop?" And one of the things that we did for the first time this year was we added the texting as an option for communication, and that was very effective. We, we got good feedback on the use of texting as a way to communicate with families. And then we also need to look at our numbers, and we have participation. As I mentioned, we have six hundred people, fifty people who registered, and we saw an increase in our completion rate this year also, that we had almost a fifty percent completion rate. So we have, we have an adult club also. We had a hundred and fifty people register for the adult club. We had children registering, almost five hundred people, children had registered between the ages of birth all the way through high school. And so our completion rates all- And so our completion rates all increased this year. And so that's just a really positive thing. We've always, we've kind of, as a history, seen a decrease in the completion levels of our third, fourth level. And so we tried to think, what, what can we do to incentivize and cause kids to want to complete and finish the whole program? And so we did offer a few new incentives for those levels. And so I think that helps to increase our completion rate. Some fast facts. This is just talking June first through July nineteenth. We, programming, if you look at our programming numbers, you see that our summer programming doubles from what our regular programming is. So we offered eighty programs throughout the month, those months of June and into the first half of July. And our attendance went up by a thousand people coming through our doors to come to those programs. So we are a very, very busy place. And our door count from two thousand twenty-three, just looking at the months of May and June, to two thousand twenty-five, our door count has increased by a thousand. Just people just walking into the library. And if you look at just the year two thousand twenty-five, between May, which is still during the school year, where we had still a very busy library, three thousand one hundred and thirty-eight people coming into the library, to the month of June, five thousand six hundred and sixty-five people coming into the library, just walking through the door. So if you can imagine, you know, what that looks like, we are busy. And our circulation staff support that also because the computers, five hundred and eighty checkouts on the computers. Five hundred and eighty is not, you know, that's low. Because you might have a kid get on the computer and we check it out to them. And then that kid gets off the computer and another comes in and we didn't get it checked out and checked back in again and/or checked in and checked out again. And that can happen multiple times in a day. Or you may have someone who comes in at nine-thirty in the morning and they are there until six-thirty at night and they don't go home. And so the number of hours that our computers are being used is really huge, you know, so. And there again, sometimes you'll have two kids sit at a computer too. So just to give you an idea, you know, it's a busy place. Our books, the circulation staffs for books, six thousand two hundred and ninety-three books went out just from June first to July nineteenth. And six hundred and four, six thousand four hundred and eighty-four came in. So that's a lot of books to go in and out and across our circulation desk. That averages out to, that averages out to six, three hundred and sixty-five items passing through the circulation desk every single day that we're open. So you can see that's a lot of books. And you see the note, just in note of the number of children's books and the significance that that is to our community and to the children of our community. That, you know, we're supporting that literacy that we want to see. We don't want to see that drop in educational development through the summer. So we don't have any specific stats about it, but we've always kind of said, you know, July fourth comes and we see a drop in the number of people coming, we see a drop in participation in our program attendance. But that did not happen this year. From the day school got out to the day before school went back, we were a busy library. And with people coming in and using the services and, and using and just hanging out. You know, if, if you wondered where all the kids were this summer, just visit the library. You might have found them. So we have a lot of support from our community through businesses and we just really want to publicly thank them too. We had, we had to create several new partnerships this year in looking for funds for our interns and for funds for some of our programming. We, we did bring a couple of programs that were a little more expensive than we normally do. And so we were working to create those new connections and new partnerships. And so our funding, we run across the fiscal year when we work with the budget line. You know, we, we run our program June into July. And so, you know, we've got that three thousand dollar budget line. But if you notice, the budget worksheet I gave you there, our, through our fundraising, we raised about three thousand dollars in funds. Which this year was, you know, as I mentioned, we had some new partners, so it was a little higher this year than the other years. But we're constantly looking for those new partnerships, new grant opportunities. You know, some of our grants aren't available every year. And so we're always looking for ways to fund what we do because we run, we run a big program. And, you know, we, we just appreciate, you know, the, the people in our community that do support us. You know, the, the Teach Foundation gave money for our interns this year. The Elloa School Community Foundation helped fund our author, the Seroptimists were involved in our intern funding. The Rotary also played a part in funding one of our interns. And I just want to stress too, how important those interns are to us. And we don't have a budget line for our interns. And so, you know, we're always looking for other opportunities and other ways to raise those funds. So if you know of money out there, you know, send some our way. Because we'd love to be able to continue to offer the quality programming and see the increase in participation throughout the summer and through the school year and just in the library general.
So as I mentioned at the beginning, Sonia and Christie Allison were the main planners of this program. However, we have a wonderful staff and it was due to their entire efforts to get this to occur. Also, I can't emphasize enough how grateful we are to community support, but also to you because the community makes summer reading possible. You make the facilities and the staff possible. And again, greatly, greatly appreciated. So thank you. Do you have any questions for us? She covered a lot of information.
Very, very good.
Right.
For all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number fifteen, set Halloween trick-or-treat hours.
Yes, traditionally, we've done a trick-or-treat hour from five-thirty to seven-thirty on the day of Halloween, which this year is on Friday, October thirty-first. I understand there might be some conflicts or other things potentially on that date. Someone who want to look at an alternative to the thirty-first or.
I just.
Two football games going on. No school that day, I believe, is cross-country, fake cross-country. So maybe none of that affects it, but it's Thursday, about to go to school next day. Kids are still able to go out and not have to. Maybe we don't change it.
Our newsletter is getting finished up this week, so that's why we have it on middle of September, which, you know, we can, we can wait to sign October four away, this is just not put in the newsletter, but.
I don't like the idea of a Thursday, noon school the next day. Think they'll tear it up.
The lights are set off at seven-thirty.
They don't know.
True, true. I don't have an idea at all. So.
Does it have to be just a table it until, and that's in three more weeks before our next city council meeting, sixth of October? Or? And is it that or?
Kids at home, so I just. Does that fall on Friday to be a busy month or not?
Well, maybe, aren't there other organizations that do stuff the same night as trick-or-treating? Like maybe I left this church trick-or-treat.
Trick-or-treat.
Maybe we should reach out to them and see what their schedule would be too, so they can coordinate together.
I can help you with that. Yes, they are having it on Friday, the thirty-first. They've already sent out the flyer for it.
And that'd be good. If you want to separate night at thirty, we're good already. Is that a motion?
We have set Halloween hours Friday, October thirty-first, five-thirty to seven-thirty. Oh, did you have an objection back there?
What's that?
Did you have an?
No, I just, having them the same day would be, that's a, that's a good thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
We have a second, Rodney made the motion and Jessica seconded. Any other discussion? Will call that.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number sixteen is a pay application for the wastewater treatment facility improvement project.
This is pay application number sixteen from Woodbrook. In the amount of one thousand six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-two cents. This refers us to right almost at fifty percent of the way approved.
Motion to approve the pay application.
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Don, to approve this pay application. Any discussion? Will call that.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number seventeen is a pay application for the library exterior improvements.
This is pay application number five from Kingland Construction, the amount of forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-two cents for work and materials used in the month of August with change orders. Balance to finish is approximately four hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Made quite a bit of headway here in the last couple of weeks. If you go by there now, they've got the, basically the grid system that the siding and the thin brick will, will, will attach to. Then anything that you see with that cement board, that is, I think some of it's still coming out, but that is what that thin brick will be.
Jacob, they've started the thin brick today.
Should we move on there tonight and wait, see the latest?
Motion to approve pay application.
Second.
Motion from Brad, second from Kathy to approve this pay application. Any other discussion? Will call that.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number eighteen is another application, this one's for the two thousand twenty-four Airport Runway Lighting and paving project.
Yes, this is from Volker Inc., pay application is in the amount of three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-six cents for work completed in August.
Motion to approve the pay application.
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Kathy, any discussion? Will call that.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number nineteen is also a pay application, this is for the Nebraska Street, Thorington Street and Parking Lot Reconstruction Project.
Thank you. In your packet, you'll find the pay application number three for Caster Construction for work completed in August. The amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and eighty-six cents. Brief project update, the last three weeks have been really good progress with no rain. The parking lot is gravelled and the concrete crew is in town. Going to be pouring concrete this week if the rain stays away. The grading crew is also working in the south block of Thorington, so all the underground is done in that south block. They're putting in undergrounds today, it'll be gravelled in tomorrow. And as soon as the concrete work is done on the parking lot, it'll be paved in that south block of Thorington. So hopefully here in the next couple of weeks, we'll get a bunch of concrete down and get the payers going in the, in the parking lot shortly after that. Underground work is almost complete on Thorington, they just have a couple more feet of storm pipe to run up to State Street. And then they'll start focusing on Nebraska Street to do the, the mains on Nebraska Street in that last block. So weather wise, it's been a lot better, so progress has been going a lot better. And they're planning to get everything done up this year, so.
Everything dug up?
Everything dug up on Thorington. Nebraska Street still has the pavement on it, but Nebraska Street only has mains now, there's only one service to the publishing building. So the underground work around Nebraska Street will be probably less than two weeks at work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks, Matt.
Move to approve the payout.
Second.
Motion from Don, second, just to approve this pay application. Any discussion? Will call that.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number twenty, this is the first notification of vacancy in future appointments, library board trustees. Samantha Whiteford has resigned as a member of the Elloa Library Board and will need to fill in the remainder of her term, which expires June thirtieth of two thousand and thirty. And we know that Sam is a busy gal, so we appreciate the work that you've done on the library board and also our next agenda item on the Parks and Recreation Commission too. She's needing to resign that position and that appointment we need to fill, her term expires on the thirty-first of December two thousand twenty-three. So those are both city council appointments. So hopefully we'll get those filled soon. And our final item on published agenda, agenda is an appointment to the planning and zoning commission. I had a conversation with Sarah Mayer and she is excited about serving on the Parks or Planning and Zoning Commission. So I would recommend her appointment.
Thank you. Motion to be recommend Sarah Mayer.
Second.
Motion Rodney, second from Kathy, any discussion? Will call that.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Sarah.
You said on the library vote, nothing shows you, is that right? And then the other ones up.
Yeah, the library is the mayor.
Yes, right.
Okay.
That's right.
Parking wreck up.
So it's five forty-eight and I'd entertain a motion to.
Mayor, before you adjourn, as a Rotarian, I want to remind everybody that the, to go out to the airport Sunday, the annual flight breakfast is at the airport Sunday morning. It's a, you know, it's a, it's free will donation, so you don't buy tickets in advance or anything like that. But again, go out to the airport Friday morning because the Rotary Club will serve a very nice breakfast for you.
On Sunday.
Sunday.
On Sunday.
Sunday.
I'm sorry, what did I say? Okay, Sunday morning, yeah.
We do what you meant.
Sunday morning.
Very good. And, and what are the hours of that? Starts like six o'clock in the morning till?
It always starts at seven.
Seven. Seven until like noon or something.
Noon or is it? One, noon or one?
Noon or one o'clock, yeah.
We'll come before that.
Yeah. You guys are a Rotarian. Yes, we are.
I know, we start at seven, we can have fewer.
Very good. Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome, yeah. It's a, it's a nice event and always good to support Rose.
Really, thank you.
Yeah.
Amy won't.
Yeah, Amy wants to hand it over.
It's on thirty.
On twelve thirty. They were right.
So now I lost track of what I was doing.
Adjourn.
I do adjourn now. It's five fifty, I entertain a motion to approve, or to adjourn today's meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion, a second to adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much.